Good afternoon. I will call to order the October 1st meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Matt Brown. I serve as President of the Commission. I'm joined today by Commissioners Lupe Pierre, Swayze Coleman, Kogil, and Rockwell. At this time, I'll ask that you silence any mobile devices, then we can get started with our meeting. The first item in business is to approve the actions from the September 17th meeting. Commissioners may have a motion to approve those actions.
So.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And that motion carries. Next, we will sort through the agenda. We'll determine which items will be considered on consent, which we'll discuss, and which will be continued to another meeting. You can find hard copies of the agenda in the hallway. So, starting at the top, Item 1 is Calhoun Towers at 34404 and 3430 List Place and 3421 West Lake Street. That is a final flat. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on Item 1? Seeing no one, we'll put Item 1 on consent. Item 2 is the Marshall Apartments at 1625 Marshall Street Northeast. That is a variance for impervious surface. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on Item 2? Seeing no one, we'll put that item on consent. Item 3, also Marshall Apartments. That is at 1627 Marshall Street Northeast. Couple of variances related to parking spaces. We'll discuss Item 3 if anyone is here for that. Item 4 is Freedom Works at 2912 Fremont Avenue North and 2929 Emerson Avenue North. Conditional use permit for supportive housing use. That item will be continued -- excuse me. That item, let's see here. That item will be continued to the October 15th meeting. Item 5 is the City of Minneapolis Consolidated Office Building at 501 Fourth Avenue South. A variance in site plan review for a new office building. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on Item 5? Seeing no one, we'll put Item 5 on consent.
Is Item 6 being continued?
Oh, okay.
Did you say Item 4?
Oh, Item 4. Excuse me. Item 4 is not being continued. Item 4, we'll be considering today. I got that mixed up with Item 6. Once again, just to make sure, is anyone here to speak on Item 4? Okay, so we do have some people. We will discuss Item 4 as well. I apologize for that. So, Item 5, just one last call. Is there anyone here to speak on Item 5, 501 Fourth Avenue South? So, Item 5 will be on consent. Moving along to Item 6. That is the item that will be continued to the October 15th meeting. That is at 2027, 2029, 2033 West Broadway, 2301 Oliver Avenue North, 2104, 2106, 23rd Avenue North, and 2101 West Broadway. So, again, Item 6 is continued to the October 15th meeting. Moving along, finally, Item 7 is at 1713 through 1735 Nicolet Avenue and 16 East 18th Street. Several applications for a new multifamily building at that location. We'll discuss Item 7. So, if anyone is here for Item 7, we will discuss it. And that is the end of our agenda. So, our agenda as amended is as follows. Items 1, 2, and 5 will be on consent. We'll discuss Items 3, 4, and 7. And Item 6 will be continued to the October 15th meeting. Commissioners may have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our Committee of the Whole Consent Agenda items. And Commissioner Lupe Pierre, do you have an update from the September 20th meeting?
Um, yes. We approved a land sale for 301 30th Avenue North and 305 30th Avenue North, and recommended that the items were consistent with the Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth for the construction of duplexes.
And I'll take that as a motion to find that those items are consistent with the comprehensive plan. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our public hearings. Actually, first, let's have a motion to continue Item 6 to the October 15th meeting. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And that motion carries. Item 6 is continued. Now, we'll move on to our public hearings, and I will open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda. Again, that's Items 1, 2, and 5. Once again, is anyone here for any of those items? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and Commissioners may have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our first item for discussion. That is Item 3. And staff is Ms. Rouse. We saw an application for this address not too long ago, so perhaps we can just focus on the changes to the project and the new request.
All right. Good evening, members of the Commission. So, you did see this at your August 13th meeting, I believe it was. The only changes to the application is the applicant would like to add two surface parking stalls, parallel stalls, on the south side of the building. As you can see in the drawings here, here's the original plan. And so, the new modified plan would shift the driveway just a little bit to the south to accommodate those two stalls. They do need a variance for the distance to habitable dwelling units, reducing it from six feet down to four feet 11 inches, and a variance to allow parking in the interior side yard. Staff has found that there are no practical difficulties that exist in complying with the ordinance regulations. The additional stalls are not in keeping with the spirit and intent of the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance, but that it would not be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the general public, but it does have the potential to create onsite pedestrian conflicts. And so, we are recommending denial of both variances. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Right. And Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Coleman?
The potential for to create onsite pedestrian conflict, can you elaborate on that, please?
Sure. The stalls are located in a manner where pedestrians that are going to leave, the cars are going to be exiting adjacent to the window wells and right against the building, and they would also exit on the other side into the drive aisle for traffic coming and going, and there's no sidewalks to connect that.
Thank you.
Any further questions of staff? Hearing none, I will open the public hearing. Commissioner Schrader?
Just a quick follow-up question. Did you receive any public comments?
Uh, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And I will open the public hearing on this item. I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first. If there's someone here to speak on behalf of the applicant, and you can come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and let us know if there's anything you'd like to add.
Hi, members of the Commission. My name is Mark Hughes-Coat. Address is 301 Fourth Street Northeast. This project is already approved, and we looked at the project and worked with the neighborhood group to add additional parking stalls. We found a creative way and looked at all possibilities on the project location. We deem that this would be a general benefit to the neighborhood and to the tenants of the properties. Because of Marshall Street being a long corridor, there's no cross streets there for additional overflow parking. It would be all on Marshall. So, we are asking for this approval.
All right. And Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Lupe Pierre?
I was just wondering, what was the unit count on the site, as well as the existing parking count that was approved?
Total, there's two fourplexes. Total would be eight dwelling units, and there's seven available spots right now.
Thank you.
Any further questions? And perhaps you could clarify, so is it more your preference to have additional parking, or from a leaseability standpoint, or is it more just working with neighbors, they express those concerns, or a combination of the two?
This was a direct request from the Sheridan Neighborhood Association. So, we looked at it and said, yes, we'll go down this path.
Commissioner Schrader?
I just want to follow up on that. It'd be really helpful for the Commission to have, you know, a letter support from the Sheridan Neighborhood to put that in. I have heard that you've worked with the neighborhood, and that's how this came about, but it's good to have that in writing, just so, because if they're not here to talk about it, oh, there we go. So, that helps out a lot. I also just want to address, the staff did a really good argument of why the parking shouldn't be put like this. Is there other options and other ways to kind of put the parking, to kind of arrange it?
We do have our architect here, and perhaps he could speak on that.
All right. And we can see if there are any further questions of you quickly, and it doesn't look like there are. So, yeah, we can move on to the next speaker.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi. Michael Stoddard with DJR Architecture, 333 Washington Avenue North. We looked at several ways to configure the parking on the site, and being that it needs to be in the rear, that is where all the parking is located. And constraints of the site, the fact that there is no alley access, and you have to provide a drive up the middle to get to access in the back, there really wasn't more space on the site to do additional parking support between the buildings. And we've positioned those so that we can limit the setback as much as possible and get parking on the interior between the two buildings.
Thanks. Right. Any further questions of the speaker? Hearing none. We can see if there's anyone else who would like to speak on this item, and please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Hello. My name is Michael Welch. I'm a business owner in the Sheridan Neighborhood. I'm also a board member, and I'm also a member of the 13th Avenue Business. When Mark came in front of Snow a few months ago, he had the plans up, and he really worked with us. We're in support of this project with the two parking spots. Obviously, that area is, parking is a premium right now, and these two spots would, it's not going to make or break, but it definitely will help. And it was also, some of that was really personally and with everybody with Snow, we thought it was really good that the developers wanted to work with the neighborhood, so.
All right. Thank you. And is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Doesn't look like it, so I will close the public hearing. And Commissioners, we have the two applications before us, the two variances. Commissioner Lupe Pierre?
I had a question for staff. Somebody, can you tell what impact this has on impervious slot coverage compared to the previous application?
So, for this lot specifically, it doesn't, it increases it slightly, but it doesn't put it over the maximum allowed, but it does increase it on 1625 because the driveway did have to shift all the way to the south. And that was the variance to increase the impervious surface coverage that was approved on consent for 1625.
Thank you.
All right. Again, we have the two variance applications before us. Are there any further questions, or would anyone like to start things off with a motion? Commissioner Kogil?
I'd like to move to the recommended motion to deny the variance to allow parking stalls within the interior side yard.
Second. Right. We have a motion and a second to deny Item A, the variance for parking in the interior side yard. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Schrader?
I just want, I think there's very good reasons to approve the motion, but I'd be voting against it, just with the work that's been gone in to the neighborhood, that this is not making a large increase in the imperial surfaces. I don't see a huge impact to voting to deny this, or to, listening to the neighborhood.
Commissioner Rockwell?
I, you know, I seconded this in large part, just, this is a, an area that's walkable to, commercial area, to groceries, that is off the Number 11 line, the Number 30 and Number 32 buses. And as we move towards, need to be a city where people are driving less, one of the ways we're going to have to do that is, you know, put more investment into our transit and incent people through also not having as much parking. So, I support this motion for those reasons.
Commissioner Lupe Pierre?
Yeah, I'll be supporting the motion as well. I couldn't find enough, the practical difficulties just weren't there, in my opinion, and seven stalls for eight units isn't unheard of in the city, so I can't see where I could justify this without setting a precedent for some future problems down the road. So, I just don't, can't find the practical difficulties.
All right. And Commissioner Coleman, do you have something to add?
I just wanted to agree that I can't get over the practical difficulties issue here, and that's one that I hold dear, and I kind of like to stick with it. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? I will add as well, looking at the criteria number three related to the variance being detrimental to health, safety, and welfare, I do have some concerns. I'm not entirely opposed to the idea of additional parking spaces on the site. One of my main concerns is really the awkward vehicular circulation that results. There isn't really a good way of turning around, and I think it just creates a very odd layout, which can create some potential negative impacts. So, if there is no further discussion, we have a motion and a second to deny Item A. Clerk, please call the roll.
Coleman?
Aye.
Kogil?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lupe Pierre?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
No.
Swayze?
Aye.
Eight to one.
Motion carries. Next, we have Item B, the variance for the minimum distance of parking stalls to the dwellings. Commissioner Kogil, would you like to take a stab at that?
Yeah, I'll move the recommended motion to deny the variance to reduce the minimum distance of parking, of the parking stall from the dwellings.
Right. We have a motion and a second to deny Item B. Is there any discussion? And Commissioner Kogil?
I'll just speak briefly. I mean, similar kind of ideas from what was mentioned by my colleagues on the last variance. We, if we're going to meet some of our goals, we need to send a clear message that we are not investing in vehicular transit and in automobile transportation, and this is a very small way that we're doing this. I think it's not much of a practical difficulty, and that was clearly outlined by staff, and it's the same situation with this variance as well.
Commissioner Lupe Pierre?
Yeah, just same as before, I just don't find the practical difficulties, but furthermore, I actually disagree with staff on the third required finding. I actually do think it would be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare. I mean, there's no place for pedestrians to walk, except in this drive aisle, which is now made more difficult to navigate, given the, I don't know how you pull two cars parallel and then get them out. But furthermore, then, for pedestrian, there's a heavy of window wells they have to navigate if they don't want to be in the lane of traffic. So, I just, I actually think it would make the site detrimental to pedestrians, and therefore, I actually think it doesn't meet any of the three required findings for the variance.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second to deny. Clerk, please call the roll.
Coleman?
Aye.
Kogil?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lupe Pierre?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
No.
Swayze?
Aye.
Eight to one.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on Item 3. Our next item for discussion is Item 4, 2912 Fremont Avenue North, 2929 Emerson Avenue North. Staff is Ms. DePaulak.
This is an application for conditional use permit for up to 180 beds in a supportive housing facility at the existing site. The site occupies almost the entire block bounded by Emerson and Fremont Avenues North, and then 28th Avenue and 30th Avenue. It's this block here in the center of the map. There is a church on this property that used to own the office building, and it was affiliated with the rest of the block, but they have sever ties, if you will. The church is independent now from the rest of the block, and the applicant, Freedom Works, owns the remainder of the block. They were here before you in May of this year for a 72-bed facility at the former nursing home located here at 2912. Here, I'm going to orient the site plan, so it's, this might not be as easy to read. This is the 2912 building. And then 2929 Emerson Avenue North is this building here, which is a former assisted living facility. It might be easier to, because they're on separate parcels, but this is one zoning lot, and all of the buildings are interconnected to one another, including that office building on the far south corner. They were here in May of this year for a conditional use permit for 72 beds in the former nursing home. They are now coming back and asking to increase the number of beds in that building to 108, and that would be the maximum that they would put into that building. And then, at 2929 Emerson, they are also seeking the conditional use permit to have 72 beds, and that, when they were here in May, they did not know how they were going to repurpose that former assisted living facility, and then after some time of consideration, they came back to the city, approached us with the plan that is before you this evening. And so, for a total number of beds in the facility would be 180. We are recommending approval of the conditional use permit to repurpose those two buildings. There are conditions related to landscaping. They are similar to the conditions that were on the application before you, and we recognize tonight that we are here for additional beds, not necessarily to talk about the landscaping again on the site. So, I will stand for any questions.
Right. And Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Ellison?
Yes. Have you talked to the neighbors in the area?
I have not talked to the neighbors. I have received--
Have the petitioner, have they?
I would let them answer that question.
Okay.
I should say, I have, I had one phone call today that I had to talk to a resident.
All right. In that case, I will open the public hearing on this item, and we can have the applicant speak first, if there is someone here on behalf of the applicant who would like to speak, and let us know if there's anything you'd like to add to staff's presentation, and perhaps you could answer Commissioner Ellison's question too, just about--
My name is Bob Johnston. I've been the primary point person for the applicant and the initial purchase of the building. We have had the constant communication with and support and encouragement of Jack, Jordanary Community Council, Kathy Spann, in fact. Kathy sent me a note just a few weeks ago, giving them, giving us, and encouraging us in their, in their support. We've had the Police Department from the 4th Precinct tour our facility and let them know they have given us the thumbs up for it, saying that there's enough people running around that aren't wanting to get better, and they are very supportive of us. I don't know what questions you have of me. We are, we acquired the facility for the purpose of expanding our program and to increase the depth and scope of our program to include ultimately, in the future, those in the neighborhood. We want to work with collaboratives and provide more services and incentives to the people with whom we serve. So, I don't, I don't know what, what questions you would have of me.
Yeah, we can see if Commissioners have questions, starting with Commissioner Lupe Pierre.
Yes, you mentioned that you talked with Jack. Did you also talk with the Hawthorne Area Community Council, since they're a block away, or no?
Yeah. We have, we originally were to meet with the Hawthorne, or excuse me, with, yeah, with the Hawthorne Neighborhood. Andrew Bornhoff was my contact, and we were scheduled to meet with them, and he forgot all about it and scheduled someone else, and so, we weren't able to. But they were sending letters, both for the May and for this time, to explain what we're doing and what the purpose of the CUP was for.
Okay, and, thank you.
Commissioner Coleman?
Hi. I'm curious about the reasoning for the change in your use from May to now? What was the programming, the cause for the programming change?
The cause was, quite frankly, we didn't know what we were going to do with the facility as our, our thinking went deeper and we drilled down into it, and what we really wanted to see ultimately in the future for the program was to provide incentives for people to move from the 2912 building into independent living. We also have plans to, in the future, to see how we might reach out to families and reconcile families. That's one of the things in our mission. We, we think we don't do as well as we could in that area, and so, this will provide us future opportunities to explore that kind of ministry.
So, I could follow up, so just to test my understanding, I think what I heard you say is the programming for the second building drove reconsideration of the programming for the first building for which you received the CUP approval in May.
We, we received a CUP for the former nursing facility in May, yes, and what we'd like to do is add the adjacent building to that, which is a, which is a different kind of housing.
Commissioner Lupe Pierre?
I was wondering, you had mentioned that it's an expansion of an existing program. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So, with your existing program, have you had any complaints or situations or calls for service or anything? I mean, what's the general, how well-received is the existing program?
I think the neighborhood, the 36th and Penn is, in fact, we've been a stabilization for that neighborhood, and I think we've been receiving exceptionally well. We've reached out to that neighborhood, providing coffee and donuts at the bus stop in the wintertime. We do trash pickups. We've had in the past closed down the block and had a Saturday afternoon where we had a picnic and rides and things for the kids to enjoy, entertainment.
But have you received any complaints, or is there, you know, is an uptick in 911 calls, or all those things that we typically hear complaints about? Nothing?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Any further questions of the applicant? If there are none, we can move on to some other speakers, and just so I have a sense, how many of you would like to speak on this item? So, several of you. I'll just ask that you individually come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. You can decide who goes first, and keep your remarks to about two minutes. I won't keep time, but just be mindful of not simply repeating things that others have said. So, who would like to go first? I guess we can start over here? Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi. My name is Curtis Smith, and my address is 3221 3rd Avenue South in Minneapolis. I work for a partner organization called Crossing Home that works with similar kinds of residents across the state, and I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak in favor of Freedom Works. And we partner in what's called the R3 Collaborative of Recovery, Renewal, and Reentry, which includes Freedom Works. And so, we know them quite well as an organization and work along with them in particularly in recovery and reentry with the same kinds of clients. And so, I also, by the way, am wearing today a name tag that I received from what's called the Minnesota Statewide Initiative to Reduce Recidivism. It's a big issue that we're all working on in Minnesota right now to make sure that the revolving door is actually stopped and that we don't have so much mass incarceration going on in our community. And so, as one who has worked in community development with ethnic ministry, and also as a professor with Bethany Global University, having to teach social justice, this is a close issue to my heart. I want to commend Freedom Works and just say that as an organization, we work with them well. They have integrity, and we've found them to be experts at what they do. So, please vote in favor.
All right. Thank you. And next speaker.
My name is Natalie Johnson Lee. My address is 1700 Oliver Avenue North in Minneapolis, Minnesota, 55411. And this is my granddaughter, Brielle. So, I became aware of this particular, the additional 108 houses on Friday night, because believe it or not, I was up reading Finance and Commerce, and they had an article on it, only to understand that the hearing was today at 4:30. And so, some of you have received phone calls from me, and I appreciate you hearing from me. And let me be very clear, I am all supportive in reducing recidivism. I'm also reporting supportive in making sure that our ex-offenders have places to live. What I'm not in support of is the heavy concentration and the benevolacy that North Minneapolis has to continue to have when this process and these pri-- when this process and these projects should be dispersed throughout the community. This is my granddaughter, as I introduced to you earlier. She will be two blocks from potentially 200 ex-offenders. Now, I'm not sure if you have grandchildren. I'm not sure if you have children. But I'm also not sure that you would want them located within a block of 200 ex-offenders. Now, let me understand this. I also understand that many of the ex-offenders that are coming out are non-invited ex-offenders, and they need a place to live, and I support that. You asked earlier about their previous location. That's 15 to 17 beds. You have already approved 72. Now they're coming back and they're asking for additional 108, all in one location. So they have managed 17 to 18 well. Now they are going to be tested with 72, and now they're coming back to ask for additional 108. One of the things that we talk about consistently is how we want our communities to prosper. Communities have a hard time prospering when they keep having to bear the brunt of societal ills without the resources. Now, we can get here and some people, and he talked about being from Bethel. You know, I'm a Christian woman. I go to church every day. I know what the Bible says. And I believe in the work that Freedom Works is doing. I don't believe that it has to be housed in the heart of North Minneapolis with the over-concentration. We're already oversaturated. We're asked to take on the sex offenders. Right now, we have the highest ratio of sex offenders in the city, in our community. Now, in the state, I'm sorry, in the state. And I'm not saying that these ex-offenders are sex offenders, but we're continuously asked. The other thing is, we also have questions. Are these residents, are they coming, are they returning home? Are they returning home? Are these North Minneapolis residents that are coming back home? When we drive down our streets and we see where the sex offenders are located, they're not former North Minneapolis residents. They're not. And so what we're asking you, if nothing else, to postpone this decision, if not, deny it. Because we cannot bear the brunt of this. Our homeowners, our properties matter too. Our children matter too. Unless the city is going to start buying people's property value, because the property value is not going to increase. People just, in your marketing, North Minneapolis is a place to come and live and work and play. And it is a great place. North Minneapolis is a great place to live. But we cannot keep oversaturating it with the ills of our society. And understand this, I'm not saying the ex-offenders are ills, but it's the burden that we continue to have to carry. And we're, especially in the Jordan area. Have you seen the statistics in the Jordan area? So I'm not sure what Jack was thinking about when they approved this. I don't, I mean, maybe they have a letter of approval. I didn't see it. I don't know if that was given to you. But I did read the letter that they sent out, and nowhere in here does it say that they're looking for first the 72 beds, and nowhere in the letter does it say that they're looking to do an additional 108. It doesn't say. It just says that they will be, some ex-offenders will be housed there. So they don't give very many details. And the devil is in the details, and the things that we need to look at are in the details. So I'm asking you, so that we can also line up, you know, I was talking to one of your representatives today, to line up what we see happening with the 240, the comprehensive plan, so that our community has enough time to say, hey, this is how it works. This is how it doesn't work, if we want to be that detail-oriented about it. But I thank you for your time, and I appreciate your time. And I ask you to heavily consider either postponing this or, and so that more community members can come out, or denying the additional altogether. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And next speaker, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Lena Hastings. I live at 2811 Aldrich Avenue North. That is in the Hawthorne neighborhood, which is across the street from this facility. The office is right across the street. It's not a block away. If I had better muscles, I could almost throw a rock to the place for my house. And I have to tell you, my husband and I have been involved in prison ministry. We go to the jail. And I can tell you that these men that are coming out, they're better than many of the people that are loose on the streets, running around, causing problems. I have lived in that home for 27 years and three weeks. And I can tell you, when I heard that Freedom Works was going to put a facility there with men that want a second chance, they choose this. These are not court-ordered people coming in to court-ordered treatment where they have to check the little boxes and skip on their way, put in the time, and they go to their own business, monkey business, again. These are people that have made a determination to do better for their lives and to do better for their community and to make amends when they can. And I would be proud to have any of those men that will be living in that place as my neighbor, and I'm looking forward to it. And I ask that you please approve this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. You can decide who goes first.
My name is Melvin Broome. I live at 57 Penn Avenue North, Freedom Works Program. I'm Assistant House Manager for the Freedom Works Program. I'm also a Freedom Works graduate. Got out of prison September 16th, 2016. And just in a nutshell, my mother sleeps a little bit better now, you know? And I can understand a young lady's concern with all of us being at one spot. But I'm quite sure you all have crunched the numbers on offenders getting out, going back in, getting out, going back in. And quite frankly, the north side, there's a lot going on over there. There's going to be a lot going on over there if you okay it. There's going to be a lot going on if you deny it, you know? But today, we all stand, you know, at the point where we can do something about it. If you would have told me three years ago that I would be in front of this sort of thing right here, I would have been, hmm, because I didn't care about nothing. But now I'm a part of something that's pretty much bigger than myself. I'm able to talk to some of the residents and some of the people that live around the 357 Penn Avenue area. I'm able to talk to the guys that are out there selling drugs. And I talk to them, and they understand the program. And they say, man, that's a good program, you know? And we try to talk to them, and I try to lay out some of the transparencies that I've been taught at Freedom Works. And some get it, some don't. But like I say, hey, you know, until you get it, Freedom Works is here for you. Whenever you get tired, you know, of the in and out. Now, the neighbors, I understand. My mother lives in the neighborhood, and she's concerned about, you know, a lot of the problems that the neighborhoods are going through. But I also have respect for the Minneapolis Police Department and the contributions and the sacrifice that they're making, you know? Freedom Works is a win-win for all, you know? I'm here. Some of my brothers is here. And when I say brothers, I mean brothers. We go through it, ups and downs, but we hold each other accountable. We hold each other accountable for our comings and goings. We hold each other accountable for the classes that we take and the homework that we do to try to, you know, better our lives. And, I mean, I don't know what I can say to help you all make a decision, but by the grace of God, I'm here. And it wouldn't be, I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for Freedom Works, you know? And a lot of those people back there that you see, you know, that actually care, you know? And that's about it.
Commissioner Lukey Pierre, do you have a question?
Yeah, I do have a question, because you're in a unique position to answer this one. So as someone who's gone through the program, would you say that having the program located in an area such as north that we have heard testimony, and I live there? It has issues. There's struggles, many of which I would say isn't from north. But would you say that that's a proper environment to have this kind of supportive housing in? Or would you say that a community that maybe doesn't face as many of these social issues might be better? Because I guess I'm struggling with the concentration issue as well and wondering if this is something that is the best environment. I think if somebody was, for example, a recovering alcoholic, being housed over a bar might not be the best place for them. So I'm wondering your opinion on this.
If you, by looking at where this place is located, six blocks up, six blocks that way, and six blocks that way, is drugs being sold all around. So there is things going on all around-
Exactly.
-Minnesota that could be addressed versus a place that's willing to stop the revolving cycle, you know, of people going in, you know, that could better be, you know? Why stop a place that wants to stop the revolving cycle and not pay attention to the drug house that's down that way or the corner store that's allowing the marijuana to be sold or the store down there that's allowing the marijuana to be sold? You know, Freedom Works is designed, through the Word of God and everything, to try to input another kind of way of thinking, you know, that we all can. But, you know, I believe North Minneapolis is a great place.
Oh, I do too. I lived a few blocks away from this place for about 13 years.
And we've worked with the, I don't know if it's the Jenkins, one of those organizations over there, when they had the block party. You know, we had a chance to explain who we were, what we were about, you know?
But you don't think that having this here versus, say, any other neighborhood that doesn't have the same amount of crime happening right now, is it so all the wash, all the same?
Depends on-
I mean, I think you seem like a really good guy. I don't know how many people come on the program that have the same level of strength to go through that environment.
From on this side of the podium, it's pretty much crime being done everywhere. Just how you going to do it? Some people do it inside. Some people do it outside. But there's no, on the north side, south side, there's stuff happening everywhere, you know? And wherever you can put the help at, you know, it's needed as long as it's ran by qualified individuals that care, you know, as long as the program has a nice, solid program, you know? And, I mean, we've been a plus towards the community. You know, we have barbecues out, and we invite the people to come on and get some hot dogs, and we fellowship with them, and, you know, we try to stay as transparent as possible, you know?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thanks. And we have another speaker. And please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is George Lang. I'm property owner of 101226 Avenue North. And I've lived there for four and a half years before I moved out, and I recently moved to Blaine. Or not recently, the last couple of years I've lived with Blaine with my new bride. I'm the Executive Director of Freedom Works, and I really thank you for affording us the opportunity to be able to come down here and be able to talk about our program. As I listen to some of the things that are being said and some of even the publications that I've read, there has been some misconception of what we're trying to do on that property. We don't plan on having 180 offenders on site. We do have a vision to be able to work with men that are coming out of prison. I myself came out of prison. I've been in prison three times. I've been out now for over 12 years. I came to Freedom Works, and I'm the Executive Director today, and I have been for the last six years. The vision that I have had is one that I've gained inside prison in a prison fellowship community in that looking to build a community around a guy that has absolutely no idea of what community is not an easy task to do. But Freedom Works, we have a strategic way that we do that. So I don't look at us in a sense of being a post-prison outreach. I look at us in a sense of being community builders. The program that we have on 36th and Penn, we have 15 spaces for guys. But we're challenged on the services that we can bring to the guys on the limited location, 6,000 square feet. So I set out to find a new property five years ago. And we've visited a variety of different locations. We've even had one in St. Paul that we were looking, two of them in St. Paul, and relocating. But everything seemed to draw us right back to this property. And I've been working on this property since October of 2016. But when I got to the property, I said, oh, this is way too big. It's just way too big. That, and I was drawing back over the course of the next six months. I've worked with a variety of different community partners on this project. We haven't taken any government funding in securing this property. But people have attached themselves to the vision. And what that vision simply is, is being able to provide affordable housing, not only for the guys that we work with, which we are looking to increase to 108 per the CUP, but we're never going to hit 72 in that building with the guys that we work with. Our program is going to be the smallest program on site. The other programs that we're working with right now is Twin Cities Rise Accessibility, PPL. We are looking to complement what they're doing in a sense of providing housing for those that they're working with and trying to build up in a career development courses, but they don't have lodging. We're working with the Veterans of America, or the VA, I should say, that, for affordable housing for their clients as well that are homeless right now. So we have spaces for 135, you know, there's rooms in the center building that you've seen earlier. We see that being more of the achievement center. And as guys are going through, and women in the future are going to be going through their particular programmings and lodging, we want to be able to afford or be able to provide affordable living for our residents and the other program participants. And what that is, is that former assisted living building has 48 units. So a guy like myself gets out of Freedom Works. I lived there for three and a half years on 36th and Penn. I purchased my home when I left there. I purchased my home in North Minneapolis. And that, so for me, that was the avenue. Most guys don't have the opportunity to go out and buy their home right away, and they're looking for the next step. What is that next step for a guy that's coming out of Minnesota Teen Challenge? Or for a guy that's in PPL that's looking to get into their career development, but they don't have housing? To be able to support that, that's what we want to do. I still see that Freedom Works' model is going to be the smallest model on site. It really is. And the apartment building, the 48-unit apartment building, we look at that as a recovery community. And each one of our programs, on each floor, we're developing community within that group or that particular service, the collaborative partnerships that we have been developing. And all of the partnerships that we're developing are from within the cities. Some are over in South Minneapolis, as you know, PPL. But you have Twin Cities Rise, which is right there in North Minneapolis. A lot of the collaboratives that we are bringing to our third building, which is an administration building, which has roughly 16,000 square feet, there's 30 offices. We've already, are in conversation to get in concert, if you will, to leasing out spaces to bring collaboratives to North Minneapolis in that particular area. Now, I want to speak on the value of what we bring to the neighborhood, because you had a question. Have we had any police calls? You know that Freedom Works, in the time that I've been associated, which is basically from the conception, when I got out of Lionel Lakes, we've only had a couple of different police calls at that property. And it wasn't for our residents. It was because one of our residents was killed on August 29th, when there was, you know, there was a heroin raid, raid on 36th and Penn. And one of our guys sat in his car going to work and took a bullet in the back of his head. Had nothing to do with that police call, I mean, as far as Freedom Works. We've had other police calls that we've called the police because of the activity that's there. I want to speak from a personal side, from a guy that I would be considered an ex-con. So for me, changing that worldview of, you know, you don't tell, I don't tell, that's their business. You know, I'm not going to get involved. That's not who we are at Freedom Works. We've made a positive impact on 36th and Penn. And I can tell you that we don't have just good relationships over there. We've got friends. We've got people that come to our programming. We've got people that come to all of our events. And it's just not sporadic events, or it's just not, you know, once in a while we do something. We've got community engagement. We're going to make an impact in that community over in North Minneapolis. You can guarantee it. And the impact that we've already had, when we purchased the property and took ownership on July 10th, we had to run out 20 people that were inside the property. You could get in the properties through any door. Because of my background, I know drug paraphernalia pretty good. As a matter of fact, I've been sober for 15 years. It was riddled through them buildings. We've driven all that out. We've already brought, we've already put $120,000 into our building, into that property. With the vision that we have in engaging with community, we are already lining up with other collaborators to bring weekly- weekly food drives, bringing these. We've already developed an in-house thrift store. We're not open for business, so to speak, to be able to bring forth, um, services to the community. But I guarantee you, that property has been left in shambles for the last four years. When I first got there in October two thousand sixteen, I couldn't believe the way that the people were living in the North Oaks residency, the assisted living building. I, my recovery or my addiction has taken me in some pretty filthy places. I've never seen nothing like that. I couldn't believe that with, with the amount of people that were running in and out of that building, the drug trade that was happening. I can recognize it because I've been a part of it. All of us that are at Freedom Works, we, we can see it. What, what makes us, what's gonna make us successful isn't Freedom Works' being a standalone organization. We're not gonna have one hundred, a hundred and eighty offenders on site. It's not gonna happen. And we are gonna part, what's gonna make us successful is we're gonna engage in community. I believe we're a piece. We're not the answer. We're a piece to what is needed for over in North Minneapolis. And I feel my sister, there's, you know, when I had my four kids living with me down in North Minneapolis for over four and a half years, just in that house, which is only three, three blocks away, there's challenges. I had a guy that was killed right out of my front yard. It was, there was, there's so many things that are happening in, in that neighborhood that are almost like a normal, but it's not normal for us. For the guys that sit here, for the guys that have gone through our program, we have a seven percent recidivism rate. For the six hundred men that we have served, seven percent of them guys have reoffended in three years. And none of them reoffended from Freedom Works. It was after they left Freedom Works. I'd say that.
Sorry to interrupt. I think we have some questions for you here. So maybe we can just get, get into those. Commissioner Coleman, then Commissioner Lukey Pierre.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing your perspective as, did you say executive director?
Yes.
Yeah. And some of that was new information to me. I'm not sure it was in the, the packet, but maybe it was, um, about the scale of your program and partnering with other programs.
Mm-hmm.
And one of the requirements for development standards for supportive housing is that the operator, which is Freedom Works, submit a management plan. And has that management plan been submitted? And what does it say? Does it talk about these partnerships and about?
It does.
The number? So maybe that's a piece of information that would be really useful for us to consider. Could you just tell us a little bit about that management plan? And before you do, I have to apologize. I have to leave at five-thirty. It looks like I may not be here for the vote on this, but I do appreciate everybody speaking to it.
So within that management plan, to the best of my understanding, that it talks about the collaborative partnerships that we're gonna have. So we are gonna manage the property. We are gonna manage that vision, but we are gonna partner with outside resources that will be leasing space in the collaborative building and bringing the services to those participants or for those that are in the housing in the center building. That's what it specifically is, is, it, it talks about.
Right. Commissioner Lukey Pierre.
I had a, a question along a similar vein because I was, um, listening to your testimony and the previous speaker's testimony and I found it very interesting and compelling. But I'm a little bit nervous now that there's so many partner organizations. I too wanted to know about, more about the management because that's a lot of a hundred and eighty beds available or dwelling units or however we wanna analyze building. There's a lot of people and some of them are in your program and some are through, it sounds like a lot of other programs. And I'm kind of wondering, when there's a problem on, inevitably, somebody's gonna not be the best tenant or resident or, um, where does the buck stop? Like, who's in charge of, of?
So Freedom Works is, is gonna manage the property and we have onsite staff twenty-four hours a day. So if there is a problem, as we do now, we, we address that, we address that problem. Currently, today in our current model, we, we have the same model, but it's just on a smaller scale. We use collaboratives to be able to bring the resources to our guys right now, but we can't bring the services that we want to continue or that we envision.
I'm just wondering about those people you mentioned in the middle building and the, you know, things that aren't necessarily, people aren't, who aren't going through your program. Could you still have the ability to address property management issues with them?
So Freedom Works will, will run and manage the housing aspect of it. And the collaboratives will bring in, bring the services and the classes to those on site.
Thank you.
And part, and part of that as well is just supportive housing. So for the forty-eight unit building, that, that's housing. That's just affordable housing. Them are people that have already done their programs. And they're just, and that's the next step for them to be able to have their own independent living and affordable, I might add.
Oh, yeah. And I'm aware of that. I just know that there's a bunch of affordable housing, or nonprofits doing affordable housing scattered throughout North. And some do it well and some do not do it well. And I have no way right now of gauging who's responsible for the affordable housing that you're gonna be providing.
Yeah.
Um, so I, it, it kinda makes me a little nervous. I think it would have been nice to see that management plan in the packet or something that explains that responsibility because I, that, that's a huge question mark in my mind.
So we've been bringing on staff. So we've been bringing on, we have a director of operations who is here as well. She, she's new to the ministry. We've been bringing on, we have a strategic plan, an internal strategic plan of, of how we're gonna manage this property. Our, the Freedom Works Board is set up, um, of men and women that have, uh, not only a heart for ministry, but have a professional background and know how to manage property. Bob Johnson, who submitted the, the CUP, has been in property management for forty years. I myself have been, uh, personal investment properties throughout the city that when we look at the, the, um, scope of this, of this particular property, it, it's gonna have its challenges because of the population of people that we are reaching out to to serve. And that's not just limited to for those who are coming out of prison, but for those who don't have the life skills to be able to have or maintain, um, their independent living. But with that said, we have a skill set from committee members and board members, um, we're set up to succeed.
Commissioner Ellison.
Thank you. Cause, um, I don't think, you know, we didn't know the information that you say is the new management plan. And I don't think the neighbors do either because when they heard that Freedom Works was, um, wanted this site to have seventy-two beds and then another hundred and eight beds, um, they thought that this was just Freedom Works, that these were gonna be ex-offenders. Um, and so I want to know if we could slow down so we can, it, there's, there's a lack of information out there. I mean, I live in North Minneapolis and had not heard that this was gonna be a bunch of different, um, organizations providing affordable housing. Um, and I know that Freedom Works, you serve, what, fifteen, eighteen currently, or ten?
We've, we've been as high as nineteen at two locations.
Um, and, you know, and people here and you have reported excellent outcomes, but then to grow to a hundred and eighty, you know, overnight, I'm concerned about the capacity that, um, exists within the organization to do such and, and, and not just me, but neighbors as well.
Yeah.
So I just want to know if there's a way that we could have more community outreach.
Part of our strategic plan is that we were growing our particular programs that one at a time. And we see a three-year period. So when we looked at man, managing the program in itself, we are gonna establish the Freedom Works program is the first priority to be able to establish. And then our, we're gonna turn our attention to the, the housing of the forty-eight unit building. And that's simply being landlord over that particular property. And I def, we definitely had the skill set for that. And then with the other two floors in the center building, it's just two other, it's, it's just two other programs. And them two, uh, two other programs for the next two years following, to us, is very manageable. We're not planning on, we're, I don't, I truly don't ever see us having a hundred and eighty. I see us having about a hundred and thirty-five because that's the rooms that we count with the twenty-four, seventy-two and, and one and forty-eight and the other. I think it's a hundred and thirty-five. My math might be off a little bit. But that's over a three-year period of time. And the collaboratives that we talk about, the collaboratives aren't subleasing from us. We, we manage the property in that we're having outside services, I'll, I'll say like Twin Cities Rise. Twin Cities Rise is right down on Bryant and Broadway. So for them, we will have a partnership with them in a collaboration as we do. And you heard R3 speak earlier, that they are, R3's focus is on collaboratives. We are just right now trying to get R3 to be able to come over to our administration building to bring collaborators. But they're really, they're not, um, um, running the programs. They're bringing the services to the programs. We're managing the people. So.
Right. Uh, I don't think, oh, Commissioner Magrino.
Uh, it does look like there is, oh, sorry. Um, just so everyone, there is, I think, kind of a bare bones management plan. It's, I don't know how detailed these ordinarily would be, but as there are four paragraphs and refers to some of the jobs that are gonna have to get taken care of at the facility. And I was also gonna ask, um, how do people get placed into this program? I mean, do you work with the Department of Corrections to?
So we do work with the Department of Corrections. We have a memorandum of understanding. We work with offenders on the inside and the outside. And that, uh, we are looking to deeper or deepen our relationship with them. I, I would say that we have, uh, respect to the Department of Corrections because of the lack of offenders that come to, to our program that, that violate. So I think that that's a thumbs up for them. And they, and they take notice of that. But again, we're a smaller program that, um, but with, when it comes to right now, our focus, our second phase, so to speak, after we move the Freedom Works guys over into the property in the forty-eight unit on a temporary basis until we can get the construction needs for the center building, that, um, we are looking at partnering with a variety of different, um, local collaboratives. And again, looking for Twin Cities Rise, looking for Minnesota Teen Challenge, looking for the next step for people. That's, that's what we envision having in that forty-eight unit. But on, but at the same time, we're working with, to combat the homelessness that's, that's happening right now. So we've been working with, with Hennepin County, um, on providing affordable housing for the, for the homeless population. Not looking to become a homeless shelter. I don't want to confuse that, but for people that have ended up in a very bad position that, that can't find affordable housing. And again, I own investment properties here in the Twin Cities. And I know that anytime that I go to rent something, I get forty or fifty applicants within a week. The housing need right now in Minneapolis is at such a shortage. And I'm sure you guys are aware of that as well. So.
Um, I guess kind of along that line. So, you know, do folks just show up? I mean, are they, how are they made aware of your services?
So right now, so our, we, we haven't started marketing. We can't market something that we don't have approval for. So simply, so what we've been doing is focusing our concentration on rehabbing the property. And it's not major construction. It, it's what the city allows. There's been a lot of tear on the carpet, a lot of, you know, painting, a lot of gardening on the outside, getting the roof, you know, stop leaking, them tighten them types of things. But our attention is gonna be with our collaboratives. They know that we've, uh, purchased a property. So once we get the go-ahead, it will be mostly through word of mouth. But our three-year strategic plan, we're not gonna, we're not gonna run into this. I think that if anybody were to think that anybody can go from fifteen to a hundred and eighty overnight, would, we'd be setting the community up. We'd be setting ourselves up. But we have purchased a property, um, that we have the ability, the financial ability and the wherewithal to be able to build this and, and, and do it right. But mainly right now, uh, we, we, because we, we don't have the approval, we can't, we, we can't start marketing it, so to speak.
Okay. And I, and this may have been covered at some point towards the beginning, but, um, I mean, do you have particular types of ex-offenders that you are, have in mind? I mean, would you turn anybody away? Do you, are there certain crimes that would sort of disqualify somebody from living here?
So, you know, my heart goes out to sex offenders. And I know there's, there's a, a, a need for that. There's a high population in the Department of Correction that have sex offenses, but we don't take sex offenders at Freedom Works. We're restricted by our insurance and arsonists. We look for the, the guys that we mainly serve, I'd say eighty percent right now are, would be considered property offenders. So you have property offenders and you have person-to-person crimes that, when it comes to men that are living at Freedom Works or have been through the program, the property offenses would have drug offenses and, and low-risk violators, um, low-risk, um, offenders, I should say. But, yeah.
And I also, I guess, just had another last bit question, um, about sort of in the middle of your kind of overview here. You said that you had been intentional about removing entitlements from the program. And I was just curious what that, does that refer to like public assistance or?
No, no, that was, uh, the first time that I've ever, you know, just with my background, you know, I, I come from a pretty busted up home. Um, we weren't given anything. Um, so by the time I was ten, I was on the street. I've never really had anybody caring for me, so to speak, or helping me out. And the first time that I've ever seen entitlements, what I call entitlements, is it's at Freedom Works. When I first got there and that they, the body of Freedom Works would meet each person that was coming out and they would, and this was, uh, you know, thirteen years ago, then they would just gift a person. They would, they would give, um, provide the first month's rent for free. That's a good thing. Um, they would provide, uh, clothing for, for those who were coming out as far as gift cards. They would provide, um, food support as far as gift cards for Cub. They would, a, a, a ton of necessities. But they haven't asked one person yet what they need. And I thought that was strange because for me coming out, growing up the way that I did, I had to fend for myself. I watched a lot of guys get their card, their, their food card, and they'd sell it for half price. And so I kind of throw that in a sense of entitlement. I also believe that the housing, providing a pathway for guys to get the first month free, what the church would call grace. I've always known grace to be something that is a free gift of Christ, but can't be taken back. But after thirty days, they would, after giving them all these things to a population of men, to be honest with you, because I've been in prison three times and I've worked with the, the offenders now or ex-offenders for over twelve years, it can almost do more damage than any good. So I have a belief, a fundamental belief, that you have to have skin in the game. And when I said earlier about building community, so the guys that are coming to Freedom Works, the thing, we're not trying to put every, we're not trying to do their work. That in, in any program that has any value, that it's not the management doing the work, it's the participants. And I see, um, our men respond better when they have skin in the game. So instead of coming to Freedom Works and saying, hey, we're gonna take care of your rent for you. Don't worry about a job. That's, that's just not gonna happen under my reign, so to speak. These things changed three years ago. I'd say they had the best intentions to be able to meet, you know, to be able to surround guys and set them up for success, but they were limited in their experience when the vision of Freedom Works and the birth of, of the ministry. So I've, I've gotten rid of a lot of things over my time. I've, I've not, I just wasn't hired as the executive manager. I, I was actually the caretaker. I was a event coordinator. I was a program manager or case manager, then the program, uh, manager, and then the director. So all through my tenure, so to speak, I've taken away them types of entitlements. Now, when it comes to government support and entitlements, them programs are set in place for people that have need. And, and I have seen firsthand that people be, then, then have the cognitive skills or did just life hard, the hardships of life that stack, that came on them, that them programs are set up, you know, that we support as taxpayers to be able to bring them things. Them aren't the types of entitlements I'm talking about.
Okay. So it's kind of just term you guys use, it sounds like. It was just a term that you guys use.
It's, you know, lack of vocabulary on my part.
No, that's, all right. Thanks for answering the questions.
All right. Thank you. And.
I think my two minutes are up.
Yeah. We, we can, uh, we can see if there's anyone else who would like to speak.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we have a couple of people. I think someone in the back here. And then, yes, if you'd like to go next, that'd be great.
My name is Glenn Ford at, uh, twenty-six thirty-two, uh, Fourth Street North. I've been here in Minnesota ever since sixty-nine. I have seen North Side grow. Just even this past week, I have met with, uh, people from, uh, Hugo, Minnesota, moving back North Minneapolis. And the reason why they moving back, because there's more opportunity instead of living in, uh, Hugo, Minnesota than living right there in Minneapolis. Uh, they concerned about the crime and stuff like that. Myself, I am very much concerned about it. I go to church right on the corner there of thirtieth and, uh, and Emerson. And I hear that they have mentioned that the neighborhood haven't really got the information that this, uh, Freedom Works. Uh, I also go to, uh, Hawthorne. We meet every month at Hawthorne. I haven't heard anything about the Freedom Works. Hawthorne put out information, what's gonna be a cabinet in the community. Uh, I'm also, I, I belong to a New Baptist Baptist Church. And I do believe in Matthew twenty-five, when I'm hungry, someone fed me. Or when I was in prison, somebody visited me. I, I know, I have no problem with that. But also I have raised three wonderful kids right at North Minneapolis. And when they speak of North Minneapolis, the first thing they think about is the crime. I do believe that something could, could happen. Maybe they can put it, since they got one facility already on Penn. I see it as a financial gain. And I just feel that is taking advantage of the minority people that live North Minneapolis and some, uh, non-minority. But I see the things. But I see the things by living there and I've seen the growth. And I just believe that they put some facilities like that there. The people that are now coming from Hugo or coming from Long Lake, Minnesota, they want to get to North Minneapolis. North Minneapolis is a nice place to live. I lived there and I've been living there for a long time. And like I said, I raised three wonderful kids and I, I just, now I got grandkids. And it's like I said, I want the best for my kids. I want the best for the, in the community. I do believe there's also spaces maybe in Anoka, maybe in Wayzata. Why the facility had to be at North Minneapolis? I have had lost a brother back about six or seven years ago. He went to prison too. But what happened? He gets back, get out, he goes to the facilities to get help. But if you put a person, I'm just using for example, if I'm married to a lady and she's still on drugs, I've been in treatment for five years, come home, what's going to happen? You put me where it's a drug set and I just got offered? What's going to happen? I'm going to go back inside of using. You might walk to Lori and there's someone out there selling the same drug that you've been on, might meet old friend, you know, and he fights you over to the house. What's going to happen? That person will go back to the same thing you've been doing all the time. And I just, I just couldn't, I just heard about this today. And it's not right to try to approve something and the neighborhood don't know about it. That's all I want to say. And I wish God bless you guys. I really love you and I really do care. And I know who, my name is Glenn Ford. And if anyone asks, I have did foster care in North Minneapolis. I got some good, good stories. You know what I'm saying? That kids been violated and stuff and I have turned them around myself. And I have never asked for an organization to help me to do it. I also put on block parties over in North Minneapolis. I did it for about now going on 17 years. I do it every year for kids in the neighborhood. But the whole thing is that no organization seeing that one individual doing something in the community and help. I don't do it for money. I do it for the love of God. So the whole thing is that I'm saying that you don't find kids out there. Yeah, you get the block party, you get all that, you get the popcorn, you get the hot dogs. Well, this kid's hungry out there. So what naturally they don't come. But how many adults don't come to support what you're doing? And that's the whole thing I'm concerned about. I'll support it if you was out in Anoka or somewhere else. But don't continue bringing stuff into North Minneapolis where it need help. We want something to build in North Minneapolis. That's what we want. And that's what I want. Thank you.
Thank you. And a couple more in the back first, and then we have two, two more here. Please say your name and address.
How are you doing? My name is Lisa Neal Doggato. I'm North Minneapolis resident. I live 1210 James Avenue North. I'm here because my younger cousin, who recently bought a house, maybe about three years ago, right around the corner from there, can't be here today with her four, well, excuse me, three kids and two young grandkids that she's also helping raise. I believe in, I believe that offenders need a place to live to include sex offenders, to include arsonists, to include everybody. I think that they should be able to come back into their communities where they've offended and that they should get the help that Freedom Works is providing. I believe that everybody deserves a second and sometimes third, maybe fourth or fifth chance. However, I'm a lifelong resident of North Minneapolis with the exception of most of my military time. And North Minneapolis is the dumping ground. I was born and raised in the house that I currently live in. And I don't mean to say that it's a dumping ground, but North Minneapolis has within a stone's throw from me, already have two houses that house nothing but sex offenders on my end. I have shootings in my neighborhood daily. I have homicides almost monthly. And my neighborhood isn't very much different from the neighborhood that they're living in. As a matter of fact, there were just three homicides there just recently. So we're talking about the neighborhood that is already dealing. They're trying to get people to move into the neighborhood. They're trying to get their houses bought. There's developers buying lots and land there that are developing houses in that area, in that community. However, who's going to buy a house with their facility right around the corner? Heard a lot of great things about Freedom Works, but it's the difference between managing 15 beds to a potentially 180 beds. If they've already been approved for 72 beds, what is the problem with letting them fill those 72 beds since it's been approved already? What's the problem with letting them fill and they can reach out to the community and work on a plan with the community to increase after they've shown success? Like I said, it's easy to be successful. They talk about how, what a great job they did on 36th and Penn. I can tell you right now, 36th and Penn is still a hellhole. So I don't know what it was before they were there. And I've been back in town, I think maybe for the last eight, nine years. I can't tell you what it was before then, but I can tell you how bad it is now to the point of the Star Tribune has articles all the time because the school is right down the street from 36th and Penn. They have bullet holes flying all over. So and I'm not blaming Freedom Works for that. And I'm not blaming them at all. What I'm saying is it's a bad neighborhood that's trying to recover. They have developers in there rehabbing houses. They have houses going up. Those houses are going to sit empty. My little cousin now is looking at trying to move out of her house because she doesn't want to, she doesn't, she doesn't want to live in that area. She doesn't want her kids subjected to that because she just heard Friday, like everybody else, and I don't know what Jordan's, Jordan Neighborhood Association's notification was, but she just heard from me Friday when I contacted her. What I would ask that you guys do is to postpone this decision and let, and have Freedom Works executive manager, executive director and the community really engage in outreach because a post on Facebook is not outreach. Jordan Neighborhood told me, well, we put it in next door. Not everybody is, not everybody is in the media, using the internet. Not everybody was notified. And when I put the post up in the North Side, when I put the post up in the North Side group, a lot of people had said they hadn't heard about it. And they're on, they're actually on Facebook. I think as of that, this afternoon, there was like 140 comments. Some of those comments were in support of Freedom Works because they, they've dealt with the program and they know people in the program. Some of the comments, a lot of the comments, property owners, they're concerned. Some of them flat out, heck no. Some of them want to know more about it. Everybody believes that you should get a second chance, but they want to know more about the program. And when you start talking about bringing in outside organizations, I don't mean to blast anybody, but I have several PPL properties right in my neighborhood, a couple of blocks away, and we have nothing but problems. So when you start talking about bringing in other organizations to that, the community just needs to know. I'm not saying I'm for it. I'm not saying I'm against it. In theory, it sounds great, but the concentration in North Minneapolis is insane. And I keep looking at the demographics of this board, and I don't know how many of you live in North Minneapolis, but if it was your neighborhood who had halfway house after halfway house, sex offender housing, treatment housing and everything else clustered into one area, how would you feel? So I would ask that you delay this decision.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello. My name's Jason Sefel. I live at, I live at the Freedom Works Building on Penn Street. First of all, I want to thank the Lord for allowing me to be here. I'm an ex offender, currently on parole. So when you're talking about the people that sold drugs and been that, I'm that guy. I've been, I've been in and out of prison for 16 years. I'm not proud of it, but I've been that. I've been that guy that are talkable in the community, running around, terrorizing the community. And I'm here to tell you, I'm here to share right now is that by grace of God, allowing me to open up a door for me to find out about Freedom Works, this place has been a blessing in my own life. You know, it's not a flop house, first and foremost. That's the first thing I heard about it, when I heard about it. I heard about it from the Stillwater Prison. Actually, the vision where I got from this place, from me going here, was the side of a segregation hole, you know? And the Lord really showed me about Freedom Works. I've known George, I was in prison with George, but he really didn't remember me. I was in a Bible study with him. He shared a vision about Freedom Works with me. And the Lord opened up the door for me to, to come here, straight from prison. You know, to have actually have my own key to my, to apartment. Now, you're talking about from a guy that, I really didn't get no help from inside the prisons. That's part of my own doing. But if I actually had that to come, to come to a solid foundation. Now, first, my first, my first day in the program, my, my life followed on Jesus Christ, first and foremost. But this brother right here, Esteban, my parole officer, my parents, talking about me coming out, that's new. I'm not going to be, I have a surround. Talking about any, any good linebacker, any good quarterback needs a, needs a offensive line. And I'm looking at him like, wow, from all these years, me coming out, just been coming out. Sometimes you don't even know where to go. Cut you right to the street over the harbor lights. We talk about the felon and stuff, a lot of times I know guys that are in prison right now and don't got a place to go, they just cut them off the harbor lights. And they're running around Minneapolis or St. Paul or Mission. But I was allowed to come here to Freedom Works. They accepted me from there, gave me a chance, gave me a chance to come under, under their banner. You know, and what I want to share is that by saying it's not a flop house, you're required to get a job, pay a damage deposit, pay rent, start becoming a productive member of society. They got, they also have a mentorship program here where they mentor, they don't get paid to do this. They voluntarily do this. Some are business owners, you know, well, upstanding members of society, you know? They come alongside of us, take care. And I'm sharing that for me, it's like, that's huge, man. That's huge. And it's like, wow, they had these people come alongside of me and help me start growing and become the man that God's created me to become, first and foremost. Like right now, to share with you is that I'm paying rent. It's something I've never done. I'm actually looking forward, paying my, paying my fines. Before I used to get a ticket, I'd throw it away. You know, but now I'm looking like, wow, how, I mean, how, where I was at in my own life, I wasn't looking, I was just so in bed in these streets. But the Lord, like from this place, just gave me, gave me a chance to breathe, first and foremost, taught me with awesome people, you know, and right now, I'm building my credit score back up. These things I never looked at. They got a family, they got a family piece for men that are coming out of prison. You know, for us to get back in our children's life, you know how hard it is for some of us single fathers to try to get back in our children's life? It's hard. That's why a lot of some of us guys, we give up. We give up hope, we sign our rights over. But Freedom Works, they bring, they're bringing along pieces alongside of us, surrounding us with these, with these pieces. Become the men we need to become. Become the great men that God's created us to be. I mean, you've got a lot of these brothers here, they have visions in your life, they have dreams, you know, just not being part of the streets. No, we want to be part of the solution. I, I'm talking, I'm speaking for Jason. You know that when you talk about the Jordan Black Club, we were there in summer, summertime for the Freedom Works banner, me and my brother Melvin. We were out in the community with the children, showing, dancing, eating, socializing, you know, showing that we do care. But what we also do share with the young kids across the street, I don't want to see them going down that same path. We want to share about Christian program, Jesus Christ went in the streets, disciples to the roughest people in the neighborhood. And that's what I'm sharing right now is that I'm not saying that we can be part of the solution, not part of the problem. Let us become part of the solution. And that's why I truly look at it as like, you know, my own life, for me, my background, I don't know, no solid story. I made choices, poor choices. I'm making great choice, I made a great choice by coming here to this program, but they didn't allow me to come here, you know, to become the man I need to become. Surround me with good, awesome brothers. And we, you know, I also, you know, to share with you is that I'll be able to share this message of Freedom Works over in East Side of St. Paul, where it's a rough neighborhood. And we talk about, we talk about people coming from, from, in Minnesota, a lot of the drug dealers and stuff like that, I don't know if you guys know about, not even from, majority of them are not from Minneapolis. They're from Chicago, Detroit, I mean, California, from all the states. You know what I'm saying? Home from Mexico. So I'm, I'm just sharing is that I think Freedom Works, giving a guy coming out of prison, or guy that's never had enough in their life, you actually let him start building, building his life up? That's what, that's what this program does. Gives you hope. Maybe a guy don't got that hope. Give him a chance, you know, start building your life back up. As you see George, you know, guy's been in out of prison, not only is he the executive director of the program, but he owns houses, but he's a good man of God and he cares about us, but he cares about the community too. You know, that means for me, gives me hope. Like, wow, you know what? I could be that, I could be that guy. I could be that successful guy. I could walk, be a member of my society. I want to, to share with you is that even that little short time, you know, we've had outreach in the Jordan neighborhood, East Gate Festival from East Side of St. Paul. Also, you know, I'm out here in Minneapolis. I'm walking downtown. I'm on the light rails. So you're talking about, you know, the drugs and all that, it's all around you. You can go to St. Paul on the light rails, it's all around you. But I'm sharing is that, I'm sharing the vision of Freedom Works, sharing love of Jesus Christ with others. You know what? This other day, I was just praying for a guy up here on the street. And he knows the word. I was praying for him, sharing Freedom Works with him. Hey, man, maybe you can go to Teen Challenge and then maybe come here to Freedom Works. It's an awesome place. You know, just to give you a foundation. That's what I just wanted to share is that I believe this, instead of us looking at, I understand all the aspects going to it. I'm just talking about, if we're really talking about changing, you know, giving guys second chances, this place is awesome. And this place would be an asset to this community, which it already is. I just want to share that.
All right. Thank you very much. And one last speaker? Or we have a couple more? Okay. We have one, one here if you're ready to go.
My name is Jim Moore, 4810 Highway 7, St. Louis Park. I direct the R3 Collaborative. And I just wanted to come and I just want to offer a couple of things I think that will complement what people have been talking about. We represent over 500 ministries and recovery organizations that provide services. People need jobs. They need mental health resources. They need recovery groups. They need prison reentry groups. And the tragic thing about coming out of prison or coming out of treatment, the funding stops once you're out. It's these nonprofit faith-based organizations are the ones that stand in the gap and provide it. So one point of clarification with Freedom Works, I've worked for over 10 years with Minnesota Adult and Teen Challenge. We, we are looking for places that we can send our clients after, some go, most for one year, some for two years. But that's not the end of it. It takes years to reclaim a life. Freedom Works has been one of the premier providers. They've proven themselves to provide that transitional environment with resources, go to work, go to school, clear-cut authority, random drug tests, mentorship, sponsorship. When, when people say halfway houses, those are storage units for human beings. They're work release programs. There's someplace where somebody goes and crashes for 30 days after treatment. These transitional programs do these wraparound services. I've talked to George about having an R3 service center where we can have all these resources. And it's not just for Freedom Works. It's for the North Minneapolis community. One of the things, when you look at when people coming out of prison, that's been a lot of what Freedom Works is focused with, but they've also done a stellar job with people coming out of treatment. And that's Teen Challenge, Unity Gospel Mission, Salvation Army, Adult Rehabilitation Center, Metro Hope Centers. These are one-plus-year treatment programs. Those that have been in prison have spent two to three years in prison fellowship. That's an intensive, isolated unit in Lionel Lakes where people volunteer to go there so they can have a strong shot at life. So there's a selection criteria that gets involved. We're trying to find a place where these people have demonstrated a commitment to turn their lives around. And the thing I want to say for the community and by our fruits will be known, but you don't go in and turn around all the drug dealers. But volunteerism is steps 11 and 12 in the 12-step program. It's all about the faith community. Our sobriety lies in giving back and engaging in the community. This will be a center that will bless and serve North Minneapolis. Does that make sense? And so we just want to bring those resources into the city with, with the men that are in there and provide those.
Right. Thank you. And any final, we have one speaker out in the hallway here. And if you'd come to the microphone and say your name and address for the record.
Sorry for all the noise with the children. My name is Dominique Wells and I live on 2935 Gerard Avenue North. So this center will be a block away from my home. So, this center will be a block away from my home, and so I have two small children. And the thing that I keep hearing, or the word that keeps getting thrown around this evening is "community," "community, community." And I purchased my home back in April, and I came into this community, the Jordan neighborhood, because I felt it was safe. You know, there were schools around, I felt that my kids would have a place that would have a lasting neighborhood that would look out for each other and be there for each other. And, you know, I've had family that's gone through similar programs as the Freedom Works, and so by no means do I think that this program is not necessary. I think it's a great program for, you know, what they do for the gentlemen or whatnot, but I was told about this motion a few days ago. And if this is a program that has been set forth to help the community, then why are we not all involved in this decision? I can say that it does scare me a little bit when you think of me having a young daughter. And even though you guys don't house sex offenders, but when you're adding another 100 men into the community, you know, that's kind of scary, especially with backgrounds that are not, I guess, the most appealing to residents. I know that a facility like that may not drive up property value by any means, and so I can't say that I'm... I approve and I support their mission and what's going on because people need chances, people need the resources, people need the... to gain that respect back into the community. I don't believe that it needs to all be focused in Minneapolis as it is already and always has been. And I ask that, you know, this is pushed back, and we put a hold on this so that we can get more community support and just kind of understand, have a better understanding of what's going on. I heard everybody say that that belongs to the program, that they were a part of the block party. Is that all that we have to show? I'm sure there might be more, but that's all that I know of Freedom Works. And so, if this is a community initiative, then there needs to be a lot more community engagement and speak that needs to take place in order for someone like myself with two small children that, you know, purchased a home to make me ready and believe that this is something that's going to make a lasting impact on the community in a positive way. So, thank you for your time.
Any new information? Is there anyone else who would like to add anything? I see no one. I will close the public hearing, and commissioners, we just have the one application before us, the conditional use permit. Commissioner Lukey, here.
I have a question for staff. Hillary, both the Hawthorne Area Community Council and the Jordan Area Community Council were references being at least contacted, and that it was implied that Jordan had expressed support for the project, but I didn't see letters from either organization in the packet. Were those received, is it just left out of the packet? What's the scoop?
I don't have any letters from the neighborhood organizations.
Okay. Thank you.
Right. Any further questions for staff? I think the applicant's indicating that they have copies of the letters.
Could submit them.
Perhaps if you have more information, if you came to the microphone and just answered Commissioner Lukey-Pier's question, ask the applicant to respond.
It's in my other packet, I brought it. This is a note that was sent to me by Kathy Spann on the 23rd of July. She said, "On behalf of Jack, I want to reiterate congratulations to Freedom Works on their acquisition of the St. Olaf campus. The Jack board and staff wish the agency much success in its new endeavor." She goes on to tell me that they're vacating the office building because of previous problems with the former owner, and she outlines that. And she said, "Over the past few years, we partnered with St. Olaf, Hawthorne, and New Bethel Church to host the National Night Out. We were part of the Jack Week of Kindness this summer. We actually participated, I think, actually before we even owned the property." So, that's something that I received from her on the 23rd of July.
Right. Thank you. And commissioners, are there any further questions, or would someone like to start things off with a motion? Just have the one application before us, the conditional use permit. Commissioner Suizzi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move to deny the conditional use permit, and I don't normally like to go against staff recommendation, but I think here, since we're looking at the use itself and the conditional use for it, I think purely from a land use standpoint, obviously, it's better to reuse the property than to leave it unoccupied. But I'm struck by the remark that the gentleman made, who's the house manager on Penn, and I'm enormously supportive of the work and the rehabilitation that's been done, but what the gentleman said was, "Wherever..." It's needed everywhere, and it'll be great as long as you put it in the right place and it's run by the right people. And I could not agree with that more. But you can't overlook the fact that there is so much of this in that neighborhood and the concentration of it. And without even talking about moving to another city, there are certainly other neighborhoods in Minneapolis that don't have this concentration. And I think that the neighbors who have spoken out, who live in the community, you know, and from what we know from approving other projects and things, I do think that in this case, approval of this new 108-unit supportive housing facility would be detrimental to the health, safety, and the comfort of the general welfare and interfere with the use of surrounding properties. The 72-unit one has been approved, and I think that that's great. I think that that's a good start. I'm concerned also by a little bit of the openness of the 108-unit concept that... And I don't... I believe that you're being very sincere when you say, "Well, it'll never be 108," but nonetheless, the approval would be for 108, and that's what it could be. And so, we have to assume that, that it's at least a possibility, if not a certainty, that that's where it would... that it would be. And having heard the wonderful things about Freedom Works, none of which I take issue with at all, it's almost more detrimental that not all 108 would be Freedom Works, that there are these unknown contingencies. And I have every reason to believe that the intentions are good and that the hope for good outcome is good, but for me, approving this conditional use permit, just with what we have to think about is the use in this space. I can't support the staff recommendation, and I believe those would also be the basis for findings, but I will make a motion to deny the conditional use permit.
Okay. So, we have a motion to deny. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Lukey-Pier.
Yeah. I wasn't sure whether I would be supporting denial or continuance, but I was certain I wasn't going to be supporting approval tonight, mainly because, well, a lot of reasons, actually. One, is I recall when this came before us before for the initial 72, and I was curious about Hawthorne, and I heard there was some kerfluffle about getting on the schedule. But it seems like that was months ago, and I feel like, given the fact this is so close to Hawthorne, to just get Jordan's approval when they're very distinct neighborhoods, I feel like a more genuine outreach should have been done and engagement with that organization. I think a lot of people are panicking about what this means, and to be honest, I am, like my colleague, pretty... I'm feeling very heartened by what your program actually brings. I think it sounds like a really awesome, wonderful thing, to be honest. And I actually did get more concerned about the numerous other entities that would be sharing programming space and what that means. It was kind of vague. To answer one of the speaker's questions, I am one of the residents of Minneapolis. I've lived there almost two decades. I lived on 25th and Emerson for about 13 years. I can tell you it's a wonderful community, I can tell you a lot of crime happens, but that the people who live there are fantastic people. I love the people on my block. And the thing that I hear over and over is about the concentrations of things that we, as a society, put in North Minneapolis. I think it's... Real estate is cheaper than elsewhere, so that's one factor. I think that it's telling that I don't know if any of the board members for Freedom Works that are... if they currently live in North, I think that that's a huge sign right there. If you don't want it in your own backyard, then why would you expect people to want it in theirs? And I say that not because you're not wanted, but because a lot of facilities and programs and people with really good intentions put their programs in North to help North without actually being a member of North, so it's almost being done to instead of done with. And I think that historically, that's been a problem with programs' success or failure is whether or not they've partnered successfully and thoroughly with the community that's there, as opposed to trying to do good on their behalf without taking their own thoughts into consideration. So, I'm thinking of my neighbors and the people in North that I love, and thinking that they deserve to have a voice, and at the very least, this should be heard more in the community, because I think you guys make a very compelling case for your program. I think it sounds beautiful. I think that as a whole, the project seems to have a lot of loose things, though, that need to be tied up, especially when it comes to accountability. I think the community's used a lot of nonprofits and organizations coming in and doing things with good intentions, but with no sense of what they can do when things go wrong. And things will go wrong. I mean, we're human, things will go wrong, so what happens? So, I'll be supporting the motion tonight. At the very least, I think you should go back to the community, regardless of whether you get the 180 units fully approved tonight, or whether it's just the initial 72. I think either way, you should go to both Jordan and Hawthorne, realizing, too, that the boards are just a representative of a portion of the community, and try to do outreach in general. I know I used to walk the block along Emerson Avenue, pick up trash, you know, three times a week on a regular basis. It's amazing how many neighbors you can meet just doing that. So, you have a good mission, I think it's worth spreading word about it, but I think that for tonight, that's how I'm feeling. I think that maybe organizations need to understand that it might cost more to go elsewhere, but that everyone needs to share in helping lift people up and not just expect one community to do it all. So, thank you.
Commissioner Ellison.
I think my concern mostly is that there was no community engagement, and that 72 beds were approved back in May, and neighbors still don't know what's going on. I hear excellent outcomes in terms of what's happened on where Freedom Works is now currently and worked for, on Penn Avenue. And, you know, I think neighbors would... the neighborhood would appreciate hearing some of those stories as well. But to go from the 72 to 180 without knowing, you know, what the 72 will bring, I think is a little premature right now. So, be supporting the motion.
Commissioner Magrino.
I will not be supporting the motion. I think I've said a few times in other situations that we've had that I really don't like giving the impression that the neighborhood organizations are a unit of government, and so I think when we are very concerned about that, sometimes we send pretty mixed messages to folks across the city. There's a notice requirement to send things like this to people within a certain distance of the property and also to neighborhood organization that it's in, and it sounds like they've met their requirements here. Beyond that, I think this is a fairly straightforward land use question. It's a conditional use permit. I think the applicant meets the five findings for the conditional use permit. I agree, sort of in principle, that it's something that we need to be concerned about when we're concentrating certain uses in certain areas, and I think that's a problem that Minneapolis does have, but that's not really what's before us right now. So, I won't be supporting the motion.
Commissioner Schrader.
I also won't be supporting the motion. I think I would have been more open to a continuance, because I think that there needs to be work to talk more to the neighborhood, to make sure that you really are a part of it. But that said, like Commissioner Magrino said, I think the applicant meets the standards. And I hear wholeheartedly what neighbors say, that, you know, we need to have... we should have the whole city, you know, doing its fair part, and I feel for my work, we want to make sure that we're also carrying our own weight. And I would say for this and why I would go for a continuance and will be voting against this, I think that there's a lot more need than just adding these 100 beds. We have the need, and I hope that myself, my other colleagues, are able to, you know, see this in all parts of the city.
Right. Any further discussion? Commissioner Kogil, sorry, didn't see that.
Yeah, I agree. I'm sympathetic to Commissioner Suizzi's arguments, but I don't think I can support denial. I would be open to continuance, because I've heard the neighbors, and I think you have some compelling questions and want to get more educated about the program. It's a fantastic program, but the message that denial says is not... Everybody's been saying, "Oh, well, you know, we welcome the stories of..." And thank you so much for coming to speak and share your stories as folks who have gone through this program. It's probably not easy to do, but the message that we're sending up with the denial is, "You're not bad, but we still don't want you." There's a huge need, and the land use question is, I'm certainly sympathetic. I can only imagine what it would be like if this was coming from parts of my district that I represent on the park board, but that's, again, another issue, and so I can't support denial.
Right. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Kronzer.
I'd just like to throw my two cents, and I support a continuance at this point. I think there'd be helpful to be more clarity on what different programs and what different spaces and what the actual total numbers of those things would look like, because I'm confused right now, sitting here, and I don't feel compelled to deny it at this point, but I would like some more clarity into that realm.
Right. And if there is no further discussion, we have a motion and a second to deny the conditional use permit. Clerk, please call the roll.
Kogil?
Nay.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Nay.
Lukey-Pier?
Aye.
Magrino?
Nay.
Rockwell?
Nay.
Schrader?
Nay.
Suizzi?
Aye.
Three yeses and five nos.
Right. And that motion fails. Would someone like to make an alternate motion? Commissioner Lukey-Pier.
Move to continue.
A motion to continue, is there a date?
I would... I don't know what the agenda looks like for the schedule, but I think it should be enough time for the neighborhoods to actually have a full board meeting, because usually it goes to committee, then it goes to board, and so one cycle, I don't think, would be enough for them to actually engage in a meaningful way.
Recall that two cycles takes us to a pretty hectic meeting.
I believe we're not taking items on October 29th.
Yeah. And is that within the 60-day review period or the extension?
I can extend it to the 120 days, which gets us past an appeals period.
All right. So, we can accept that as a motion to continue to the November 13th meeting?
Yes.
All right. So, we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Rockwell.
Just, you know, I am sort of torn on this. I think Freedom Works sounds great, and I do not live in North Minneapolis, but I live in a city block that has both supportive housing and public housing on it. So, I know a little bit about having a variety of uses on blocks, and both of those uses on my block are small-scale uses, and I think that there is something to be said about having small-scale distribution throughout the city, as has been said a number of times. I mean, I have three toddlers, and there's no way I'm moving. My neighborhood's awesome, and having supportive housing on my block certainly does not detract from that. So, I just wanted to put that out there as I think about, you know, Freedom Works... Sounds like Freedom Works' current facility houses and supports about 16 to 18 folks, and that is a scale that really, like, weaves into a neighborhood fabric. And so, I think as you engage with community in the next couple weeks, if this motion passes, and as you think about coming back, what you come back to us with, I think... motion passes, and as you think about coming back, what you come back to us with, I think, thinking about how you address those questions of scale, because to me, that's part of the question. And I'm not sure how I, you know, I'm inclined to agree that this begs the question of policy questions that maybe stand outside of the parameters of this particular land use application. But I did want to get us to a continuance just so that the full commission can get a fuller picture of what we're looking at.
All right. Thank you. And is there any further discussion? So again, that's a motion and a second to continue to the November 13th meeting. If there is no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Kogel?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lukey Pierre?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Suizy?
No.
Seven to one.
And that motion carries. That item is continued to November 13th. So that concludes our discussion on item four. We'll move on to our final item for discussion this evening, which is item seven. And that is 1713 through 1735 Nicollet Avenue, 16 East 18th Street. Staff is Ms. Smith. I saw this at committee the whole several weeks ago, so perhaps you could focus on some of the outstanding issues.
Without having the full PDF ready to go, I can maybe just summarize what we are going to be discussing. So the applicant is proposing a six-story building. It's at the corner of 18th and Nicollet. It's just directly south of the MinDOT right-of-way for I-94. The applicant is proposing 146 dwelling units and also about 7,000 square feet of commercial space. There would be an underground parking area as well as at-grade parking. And the applicant is amenable to all of the recommended conditions of approval except for two. So one is that, is number seven of site plan review. It's that a green wall shall be installed along the blank wall of the east elevation between the surface parking area and the east property line. So if you take a look at the elevations on the east side, there is a blank wall. It provides somewhat of a screen for the surface parking area. And so we're just asking as part of the site plan review, alternative compliance analysis, that even if they can't mitigate it, that they could provide landscaping in the form of a green wall. So the applicant would like to contest that condition. And then also condition number 12, which is that the south elevation shall be revised so that the metal panel exterior shall be extended in lieu of the white stucco to mitigate the visual impact of the building and to ensure consistency in design among all street-facing facades. So you may have noticed that the other facades that face a public street or a public walkway have largely metal panel. And the white stucco is kind of a subordinate material on those elevations. So staff felt that the south elevation could be further revised just to extend the metal panel pattern. So that is another condition that the applicant would like to discuss tonight, and I am here to answer any questions.
All right. And Commissioner Kronzer.
Just a clarification on condition number 13. The, I generally support the idea. I just wanted, is that to be at the entrances or along, excuse me, along the public street frontages?
Thank you for the question. I agree with you that it is pretty vague. Let's see if I added anything in the analysis. You know, I think you're right that the condition did not say principal entrances. In the staff analysis on page nine, it did reference principal entrances. So the intention is principal entrances. It could be revised for additional clarity.
All right. Any further questions of staff? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing on this item. And I would like to ask the applicant to speak first. So if you could come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and let us know if there's anything you'd like to add.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the commission. Yeah, I think I'd probably, I think Millings staff report covers pretty much everything. I'll just comment then on the two items that we wanted to take exception to. The first one's pretty straightforward. The green wall along the east side of the property, let me just flip through, is, bear with me a second.
And I think that our, yeah, if you can put it on the overhead, we're working now.
All right. This is relatively small scale, so I apologize, but.
We can zoom in. I think there's a button on there. Or maybe the operator is doing it for you. There we go.
Okay. So on the east side, right, up to the right is north, we have the opportunity through a landscape area over the entry to the garage to add some taller landscaping along that east leg of the building. And in which case, that would take up about two-thirds, maybe even three-quarters of that facade, which basically goes between my thumb. And I think that would help mitigate any concerns for, you know, a blank wall facing neighboring property in that regard for that comment. In lieu of the, you know, so the green wall, generally speaking.
Sheldon, I'm sorry. Did you say it would occupy about one-third of that wall length?
About two-thirds.
Okay.
Two-thirds, three-quarters, something like that. And I guess the interest there is that we could provide some, let's just call it more 3D or volumous, let's just say, landscaping to screen that wall rather than something that's merely just sort of facade treatment on the brick. That's our intent. And so we'd be amenable to doing that. And then the other item, just skipping through to 12, is. So, there we go. So this is the south facade. So on the, on the west facade, of course, we have a fair amount of the multicolored metal panel as well as some dark metal panel that's three sets back. That same metal panel returns around the north side, south side here. And then we transition to a stucco. And really, the stucco in that location is designed to help break that facade down a little bit into some smaller pieces. And it should be noted that the north side has a similar treatment where we divided that other facade, which is obviously very visible from, that's in this location, from 94 and obviously further north on Nicollet Avenue. And our position is basically that, you know, the design that we have created there, we'd like to maintain for continuity from the north and south sides as well as for some transitions on the interior of the courtyard itself to force some consistency from a material standpoint.
Commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Kronzer.
So going back to the east elevation for a minute.
Sure.
There, is there any opportunity to put openings in that wall instead of trying to cover it up with?
There are.
Landscape?
We have, so, there we go. So there are, it's fairly faint here. There are, there is the opportunity for some openings, but it's openings into a garage.
Right.
We have some on the north side that we're planning to screen as a condition. We're also considering that from our own standpoint, from an access control, as much as anything, being along, on the north side, being along the, there's a walkway there in the right-of-way that's, you know, not terribly well-traveled, but existent. And so, yeah, we could certainly introduce some.
Are those what's proposed in the drawing, actually openings with screening in, or is that a masonry relief detail?
That was, we were, in looking at this thing through the development of the project, we thought that maybe in this location, some landscaping may be more appropriate than other openings. And part of that is, it's just an aesthetic, I guess, decision that to have a more continuous base, I guess, to the building on that side and use landscaping to add some variety and some visual interest.
Okay.
But, you know, openings are a possibility along that edge, too.
And that's true all the way along to the end of that mass of the building?
Yeah. So this is the wing that comes forward right here.
Okay.
Any further questions of the applicant? Commissioner Lukey Pierre.
Yeah, just one more question about the plantings you're suggesting as an alternate. How large are we talking, what are we talking about?
Probably somewhere eight to 12, 14 feet. I mean, they are actually over a parking deck.
That's what I was wondering.
For construction. So it's not like it's going to be, you know, a shade tree, you know, that's going to get 30 feet tall. They'd have to be something more maybe ornamental in a sense.
Like what quantity were you thinking?
I guess it depends on if they were more columnar or wider, you know, water tree spread or branch spread.
Right.
So I guess probably six, something like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Something enough to break that side up, to meet the intent.
Any further questions? Hearing none. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Oh, Commissioner Magrino.
Hi. I can't remember if we talked about this at committee the whole or not. It doesn't look like you've made accommodations for, and I know it's not your responsibility to do that, but people are definitely going to cut through the north side of this property. I mean, to get from between like Nicollet and LaSalle right there, I lived down the street.
Okay.
There's a sidewalk.
Right. There's a sidewalk on the right-of-way there.
Yeah. And so are you going to maintain that there?
Um, I guess it depends on how it's maintained.
I should have looked at that earlier, I'm sorry.
Are you talking about like snow removal and things like that? Or what do you, what's the question?
What was that, sorry?
I said, what's the nature of the maintain? I mean, what?
People are going to walk through the yard. And so I'm just wondering if you're planning that or?
Well, we are, you know, part of the proposal, and we've requested a permit from the, from MinDOT, is to have a patio out there that would provide some outdoor public space. As far as maintaining the trail and things, I don't know if there's any commitments that we would like to make. I mean, I think certainly we'd want to be sensitive to disrepair and litter and things like that, that, you know, wouldn't reflect well on the property, certainly. But I'm not sure, we haven't entered any agreements with MinDOT since it's their property that the walkway goes through.
Okay. Yeah, and I guess I should have looked at that earlier. I just, I anticipate you're probably going to have, you know, cow path if there's not a sidewalk.
There is a sidewalk. Now it'll continue.
Okay, okay. Sorry. Okay, thank you. Thank you for clearing that up.
It's just north of our property.
Okay. Awesome. Thanks.
All right. Any further questions of the applicant? Hearing none. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? And seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And commissioners, we have several applications for the total of six. Commissioner Kronzer.
Yes, I will, let's see here. I can get my place here. Okay, item seven. I'll make a motion to move staff recommendations for the rezoning and item B, the conditional use permit with the one stated condition.
We have a motion and a second to approve items A and B, the rezoning and conditional use permit for height. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Kogel?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lukey Pierre?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Suizy?
Aye.
Eight zero.
That motion carries. Commissioner Kronzer.
Would like to make a motion to approve variances on item C, D, and E. Item D with one stated condition.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve items C, D, and E, the variances. Item D has one stated condition. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Kogel?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lukey Pierre?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Suizy?
Aye.
Eight zero.
Motion carries. Commissioner Kronzer, item F.
I'd like to make a motion to approve staff recommendations. That lists 13 conditions with a couple of modifications. Okay. So condition number seven, remove that condition and replace it with, on the east elevation, opening shall be installed in the masonry wall with metal screening, I guess for that full length of that facade. And some low shrubs or landscaping planted along the wall. The thinking there is that it's probably from a SEPTAB issue, a little bit better to get some openings of view and then have a little greenery, and it's probably a wash and we'll be fine.
And Commissioner Kronzer, are you envisioning that those openings are transparent?
With the screening that staff is conditioning on the north side, I believe. Is that correct? Yes. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. And then, let's see, eliminate condition number 12. And then on 13, just make it clear that that's intended to be at a minimum at all principal entrances.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve item F, the site plan review, replacing condition number seven with a condition requiring that on the east elevation, the, that openings are installed with the metal screening as required by staff as well as low shrubs or other landscaping. And Commissioner Kronzer, maybe you could just explain one more time so we're clear to staff. What are you envisioning for the window openings?
Well, I would say something that's very similar to what's on the north side. And what's on the screen right here is some relatively large, not openings, but what's proportioned on this east elevation already, but continuing all the way to the end of that wall in the south.
All right. Does that make sense? Okay. And then we're also keeping condition 12, is that?
Removing.
Removing condition 12, excuse me. Removing condition 12. And then condition 13 will also be clarified that the onings will be at a minimum in the vicinity of all principal entrances.
Correct.
All right. And is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Magrino.
I'll just say quickly, since, again, I live down the street, I've looked at this lot for like eight years now, and I'm happy that somebody's doing something to it. I think it's a well-designed project, got a lot of retail space, and it looks like it'll be, you know, reasonably affordable for a market rate project. So thanks for doing it.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second to approve item F with some changes to conditions seven, 12, and 13. And clerk, please call the roll.
Kogel?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lukey Pierre?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Suizy?
Aye.
Eight zero.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item seven. Also concludes our meeting for today. We have committee the whole this Thursday. Our next meeting is October 15th, and we are adjourned. October 15th, and we are adjourned.